Again, everyone, and welcome to the regular meetings of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is June 12th, still June 12th, 2019. We're starting the meeting a little late because we had a lot of public conversation during the caucus meeting. So, right now, it's, is that right, 9:50? 9:50 PM, okay. I call the meeting to order, and let's have a roll call.
Mayor Cranjek.
Here.
Councilperson Zulu.
Here.
Sung.
Here.
Sabari.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Alversa.
Here.
Poe.
Here.
Councilwoman O is participating via phone. Borough Attorney.
Hi, Gwory.
Borough Attorney.
Here.
Borough Clerk. Everyone's present, Mayor.
Okay, let's all rise for the flag salute as we always start these meetings, and then just remain standing after for a minute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to just take a moment of silence to acknowledge the passing and accidental death of US Military Academy Cadet Christopher J. Morgan. It was a training exercise up at West Point that went wrong, terribly wrong, and he died. So, he's a New Jersey native. We're flying our flag at half-staff. He was 20 years old. Thank you, everyone. We had, as you also mentioned, on Memorial Day, we had a Memorial Day observance at the firehouse. I appreciate the council members who attended. Lizette helped organize it. It was also focused on the 75th anniversary of D-Day. I had a speech. I think I'll post it. I won't read it tonight again unless you want me to, but I'll post it for you. But one of the more amazing connections that we had from Englewood Cliffs with D-Day is that the week before, there was a squadron of C-47 aircraft, from D-Day, actually, that are stationed up in Connecticut. They flew down the river to do a circle about Statue of Liberty, and then headed back up, and several days later left to join in the commemoration of D-Day. So Nancy and I actually got to observe that at the state line lookout with people who actually knew that the planes were coming. We just happened to be there, and they fully informed us, and they said that you will never hear this sound again coming down this river. And it was quite moving, and people had smiles on from ear to ear. And a lot of the older people there had real stories to tell regarding their participation or someone that they knew in D-Day. So, as always, the world is a much better place for America. Let's have the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
Adequate notice that this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Okay, thank you. There is a borough charity project. I see some new faces in the crowd. Every regular meeting, we collect non-perishable food items for the Office of Concern Food Pantry at St. Cecilia's Church in Englewood to help our neighbors in need. There's a lot of working poor in Bergen County. I appreciate greatly anyone who's brought a donation tonight. The basket will remain out there through tomorrow morning. If you want to come back on the way to work tomorrow, drop something off, it's very well appreciated. We actually received a letter recently on May 8th from the Office of Concern thanking us for our prior meetings where over 20 bags of food were collected. That feeds and helps a lot of people. So, I'd like to say that we do at least one good thing when we come together here and not just fight with each other, that we actually help someone. So, that's why I do that. And if anyone has another charity that they want to add, please let me know, and we'll do that also. Department head reports, they were provided to the council. I'm not sure if anyone had any questions, but if you do, you could ask the Borough Administrator, and she'll field your questions to the extent she can. If she can't, then she'll get answers for you. Everybody good? Okay. We're moving through the agenda. In terms of correspondence that we received, it's usually been on the regular agenda, but now it's been moved to the correspondence. I'd like to have it in both places. But there's a list of correspondence that I've received in the last month. I've posted it there. I've mentioned the Office of Concern, the Kaplan-JCC and the Palisades. They had a Ruben run through town. They do this every year. They thank us for permitting them to do that. It's a nice event. And so that's basically it. And also, we're joining in to the celebration of the New York Nanum Foundation. I wrote a congratulatory letter. It's a Korean-American, Asian-American charity group that assists people in need and does other good works. So, we're very happy to support them. The minutes, I mentioned to the Borough Clerk earlier today, we received the minutes on Monday and had a chance to look through them, and there's some typos and inaccuracies and corrections that I thought we should make before we approve them. I'd like to table them, but also, just so I understand, for the Borough Council, once we approve those minutes, are they public? Because there's litigation discussed in there also.
Closed session minutes that reflect ongoing litigation would remain not available to the public.
Okay.
However, if closed session minutes reflect things that are already completed and the council believes that they are available, they can be posted now, then they will.
Okay, so, is it easier to table them, and then I just meet with the clerk and go through the edits?
I read through them. I have no problem with them, so I make a motion to approve.
Okay, so you're okay with typos and other inaccuracies?
Typos, well...
Well, if that's how you want to function, that's fine. You can do that. I don't function that way.
I just mean inaccuracies. That's the difference.
Yeah, and this is dating all the way back to April 11th, 2019. So, really, we can move this forward.
Well, if you're in a rush to do it, they're not going to be right.
But you're just typos, right?
No, there's inaccuracies also.
I didn't see any accuracy. I understand typos.
Okay. That's fine. What I'll do then is I'll send the clerk my own memo, and then you guys can...
A second.
Okay. You have a motion in a second.
Councilperson Zulu.
I'm going to abstain. I just haven't had a chance, quite honestly. I got them on Monday night, so haven't had a chance to review them yet.
Sung.
I'm abstaining.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Alversa.
Yes.
Poe. Councilwoman O.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
She was just unmuting her phone.
Thank you. Have certain changes.
Okay.
The reorganization and the other changes.
So, what was just moved in?
Uh, we did the closed session.
The closed, okay. So, do you want to do a separate resolution for the reorg? All right.
Because everyone can vote. I need a motion for the reorganization, January 3, 2019. So, move.
Second.
Councilperson Zulu.
I'm abstaining for the same reason as the closed minutes. Just haven't had a chance to review them.
These were the same minutes as last month. They didn't change.
I got them yesterday night. I didn't know what changes were made since last night.
Okay, I put it on there. Councilman Sung.
Yes.
Sabari.
Yes.
Hart.
Yes.
Alversa.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Hannah.
Okay, so, earlier at the caucus meeting, we agreed to actually mention who the appointment to Police Chief would be before we opened to the public, so that the public can have a comment as well to it. So, Council, are you still okay with that? You're okay with that, everybody? Okay. So, that would be Resolution 2019-140, Appointment of Police Chief, and...
Are you doing a resolution or not? Is it going to be a resolution?
Yeah, we're doing a resolution, right? So, do you want to...
Do you want to have the public...
Yeah.
We were going to name the person.
Yeah, and then you want to have a public...
Do the resolution later?
Do the resolution.
Okay. All right, so what I'll do is I'll have the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, who is Councilman Alversa, name the individual.
We're going to vote later.
Mr. Nikau, you need to refrain from speaking out.
Okay. Okay. Your unanimous choice of the Police Public Safety Committee, we recommend to this council, Lieutenant William Henklin as the next Police Chief.
Okay.
I make a motion open to the public?
Yes.
Just for this?
No, for everything. Everything. We're open to the public for everything now, and I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I want to also say that I thank Officer Charles Hill, who has done a great job running the department since October, and I thank all the applicants who applied for the position. And now, if you wish to speak, raise your hand. Let me acknowledge you, and then just come up and just sit here at the table with the microphone. State your name and address, please.
Yes.
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 I hear like a feedback.
You're looking buzzing?
I'm calm.
When you're at Nine Wheeler Drive, there's all sorts of important things on this agenda, and I don't think anybody has addressed it, but we have the introduction of the 2019 budget.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
The introduction of the 2019 budget, which I think people may not have noticed. And after the last meeting, it's a budget hearing, I would very much like to commend Mr. Sabari and all those who were involved in putting that budget together, because I know how tough it can be, because I was sitting in that seat for several years. And I'd like to commend them on coming in with a very tight budget and a relatively flat budget under the conditions we're under, with all the Bs and the K's and the this and the that. I mean, it's a tough place to be. I'd also like to say that I think you absolutely made the right decision, not to expense the tax appeal and not to expense the terminal leave or whatever else the payouts were, because no one in any business that I know of, except for possibly tax purposes, would try to run that through in one year. There's absolutely no reason not to spread that out, and I commend you for doing that. I also commend you guys for just being here and doing all you're doing on COA, because that certainly isn't an easy thing. I know I was here back in the olden days, and it was quite interesting at the planning board meeting, 2018, before it was a Democratic majority, Mr. Serenian, 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 the attorney, actually said and commended the town for doing the right thing over the last 40 years. And this is an attorney hired by the mayor and by those on the committee who actually said they had done the right thing. So, I thought that was very positive. And in listening with the, there's a lot, there is very much to look at, and I'm looking forward to hearing the presentations. The only presentation I had heard was when we were talking about putting the property at Borough Hall, and not only were they putting it there, but it also included raising the police station, raising the community center, and rebuilding them, which at the time, I think they said was an estimated cost of maybe 10 to 15 million, but in looking at other police stations in the area, they were much higher than that. And that would all have to have been bonded and paid for by the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. So, as we go into all of these discussions, I'm sure you're taking all that into account, and I know your, the expertise that's sitting up there, and just look forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
David.
Please come forward. You can have a seat and just state your name and address. Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, sure.
Heyman Mather, 75 Roberts Road, Englewood Cliffs. I heard about this settlement with Normandy, and two questions. One of my suggestions was that this should really be put out to the people for voting, whether it should be settled or not, because it really has a big impact on everybody living here, because it's going to hit us on the taxes issue. If this settlement goes through, which the way I'm reading, my understanding is, or in my little bit brains, I'm not as educated with all the facts as the council members, but this will cost at least 30 to 40 million dollars in terms of school costs and other things, which the town doesn't even have. We don't even have a high school. So, on what basis are we talking about a settlement with these guys? Okay? And everybody's saying that it is good for the city? It's not good for the town?
Everybody's not saying that. There's also no settlement. I don't support whatever's going on, anyway. And before you arrived, I don't know if you were here earlier.
No, I just came.
So, we had a long discussion with the public before. I thought we started so late. There's a proposal to have a public session where the professionals will explain affordable housing to the public. I'm of the view that they should explain affordable housing and what the committee up here, some of them have been working on to settle this matter. My view, just in a nutshell, is I don't want residential housing at 800 Sylvan. It should stay commercial. We could solve our own problems with a smaller development. And just to sum it up for you, as I said, I'd rather fight to do this and have a judge make me do something bad than agree to it myself.
So, it gets appealed.
Right, right.
By the time it will get done, it will be another eight to 10 years.
Perhaps.
I think the town is okay in paying that piece. It will be a lot cheaper to get those results down the road, and all Normandy is looking to do is make a big buck and big profit in two or three years on this project. And it is going to alter our lifestyle. I came here to Englewood Cliffs for a different lifestyle. I didn't come here to be on Edgewater. All we're going to do is extension of Edgewater over here. Okay? I am really angry about this, and that's why I've not even had dinner. I straight came here from my office. Just wanted to be loud and clear.
Loud and clear.
Thank you.
I agree with you. Thank you.
As you were just here earlier, we're going to have an information meeting on, we're trying for Tuesday at 7:00 PM at the school.
Yes.
So, please come.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
First of all, I would like to reiterate that I am absolutely opposed to residential housing at 800 Sylvan Avenue. I believe that was Normandy's plan all along. I am well aware that they were making inquiries about our COA status a month before they started presenting their alleged application for commercial approval to the planning board, and I don't think anybody should lose sight of what they really had in mind. I've been doing some preliminary figures based on some things that people have said to me about costs. By my calculations, the one scenario would have my school taxes going up 120%. That's more than doubling. And that did not, that scenario that I've worked through was one that was mentioned by someone at a higher level than this municipality, that conceivably, rather than allow us to build a new school, we would be forced to merge our school system with Englewood. And that is what merging with Englewood would do to our school taxes. That's a fairly straightforward calculation. It might be even more costly to have to build a new school. I don't know how many units you're selling out the borough to Normandy, but I'm assuming that you're going to have at least one child in every unit, on average, because we're not Edgewater, we're not Hoboken, we're not going to attract singles who want to live here. We're going to attract families. I'm not interested in what you have to say, and stop interrupting me. I do note that the most recent school bond issue that has been floated around Bergen County, which the taxpayers, incidentally, deceiveded, was in Hackensack. It was for a new middle school. The proposed cost of the new middle school in Hackensack was $91 million, which makes a new police station pale in comparison. Number three, I don't think you can call yourself transparent when you sign a memorandum of understanding in April and don't even mention that you've done it. And we have to find out about it by reading the court docket. And it's really rather silly to not be mentioning it when it's out there in public. And I think you're a lot further along than you're trying to pretend to these people and trying to deceive these people if you have negotiations on Friday and are working on finalizing an agreement based on the memorandum of understanding. It's not as if you haven't done anything as you claim. You have done something. You've entered into a memorandum of agreement, which apparently is the basis for a continuing negotiation, a negotiation that we don't want. Finally, five-minute rules. That's another thing you probably should have your Borough Attorney do some research into, what happens when you selectively enforce it.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
First thing is, I would hope that on selection of the new Police Chief, something which has been sorely needed in this town, that this mayor and council chooses to work constructively with him, rather than have the toxic relationship that they had with the previous Police Chief. Oh, I'm sorry. Rather than have the toxic relation with the past Police Chief, I would hope that this council can conduct themselves in a professional manner, and likewise, the Police Department faces an enormous struggle with overtime, staffing, and other challenges that are ahead of it. And again, it is the largest single department, and please do it professionally and competently. Second question, and this is for Councilwoman Sabari, and if you don't mind answering my questions, I would appreciate it. A lot of stuff has gone on through mailing publications regarding the affordable housing. So, you know, some audience members are up here saying that a settlement has been reached. Has a settlement been reached?
It's a memorandum of understanding. It's a memorandum of understanding. So, it's part of the process of negotiating.
So, we are not committed to doing anything at this point?
We are not being committed until we go out to the public and review the plan with them and hear what their thoughts on the plan are.
Has any, and if this is privileged or confidential information, you know, please let me know. Has any of the professionals that you've met with given you a calculation regarding taxes, school impact, or any other things based on any plans that you have at this moment?
Yes, we've had some studies done.
Okay. Now, you heard the previous resident speak up the scenario that she devised herself. Do any of these plans or any of these experts echo anything of a similar nature that the previous resident spoke of?
No, they don't, which is why it's important to come out, and it will be discussed at the meeting, on the information meeting. Because the impact and the studies that were done, both on the school system and on revenue, which, by the way, when I came on as the council, there wasn't a study that was ever done, to look at the impact of the revenue coming in versus the cost going out.
Well, that's because we didn't surrender the town.
But that has been done. But you know, you have to look at all aspects now. You remember, you know...
We had a plan.
It's like people to believe that they can sign a petition and that this will go away. It's not that simple.
The public's free to do whatever they want.
I stand for the disaster that you created.
We had a great plan. You voted for it.
This was not something known.
You voted for it.
The attorney said that the plan no longer was signed.
That was after you told them not to support it.
I worked very hard to...
You told them not to support it. They're their lawyers, whatever you tell them to do.
Would you like to raise your hand to speak?
What I'm concerned at right now is a lot of alternative theories and facts that are being presented by people who claim to have credibility. Maybe they do, maybe they don't. I don't know. But there's a lot of information going around. A lot of residents are receiving information. I see the Putting Engle Cliffs first newsletter was distributed prior to this meeting.
No one's names are on the front of the party, right?
I see that these political pieces are being put out there ahead of time, and I'm concerned that residents are getting incorrect information. I don't know what the correct information is. I'm not going to get up here and say that there'll be one resident for every, one student for every resident, that there're going to be 400 units. I'm not privy to that information, and to be honest with you, I think when people come up here and spout out these alternative facts that they've come up with, I think it does a real disservice to what is really going on. This borough faces a very serious challenge that it's been put into by actions of the planning board, and I firmly believe that this needs to be done in a non-political and unified manner, because right now, and you see who's getting up with the cast of characters, Republican, Democrat, whatever, everybody has their own agenda, but everybody seems to want to do what they want to do to benefit themselves politically and not what's best for the town. So, I would like to ensure that, excuse me, I was removed from the meeting. She just called me crazy.
I didn't hear anything.
I heard it. The council heard it. I would like the council to consider removing Ms. Valari from this meeting, because she's been nothing but disruptive and rude to me, and I don't appreciate that.
Okay, your comment said to the council, "Don't attack residents, please."
The resident just attacked me, Mr. Mayor. I don't appreciate that.
Okay, please, no more threats, all right?
Okay.
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sabari.
So, every time a speaker like Mr. Nikau comes up to blast the planning board, I will always say, "Thank you, Russ Perino, for being a great Chairman of the planning board, and you guys are all doing a great job." Okay? Because you have all the facts, and you make better decisions based on facts, not on feelings, like Mr. Nikau. Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir. That's not a tack, it's a fact.
Good evening. Mark Park, 86th Street, regarding about our new Police Chief. I'm so concerned about it. I remember about last year, chit-chatting tape. Also, you've heard about it, including me, Korean and Asian American, and I'm not fluent about English. English is a second language. They are very biased, treated about it. I don't know about the new office, is it truth or not? There's kind of an obligation. I cannot remember about it. It's just really, I hear a lot of people talking about, "Who will be our new Police Chief?" He is a perfectly biased, and we have to stop it. We don't have the information. We hopefully, we already made arrangements, I hope, he will be better than the, I don't know, prepare about it. So, our resident, especially here, Asian American, we are very, very big concerned. Also, we remember about it, when last year, well, maybe, for the past year, some protect our... Also, we remember that one last year, maybe, last year, some of our council member to look at everybody, because the body is a trap, not a trap, a balance. Is it a pinpoint of a Korean people and an American people? There's kind of, and happens to happen to our town. Maybe we are very fluent to speak English, we don't know about it. Even though here, Korean or Chinese, the second generation, third generation, they don't have any language barrier issue. But here, we are first generation, we cannot express our own mind, or our, you know, emotions, something like that, there is a certain time where we misunderstand each other, and then we got very, you know, bad memory regarding it. So we are very concerned about it. Who is a new police chief? And then hopefully to be very, very true to our town resident, that's number one, my concern. And I don't, when it's, you know, councilman, or a resolution, the lady with the private person, the public session, we mentioned that, we remember that I will be leaving next Tuesday, because we want to get more information from you guys. We have your own opinion, why don't you, you know, just spread out to the public, we're going to start about it. And then you can just, you just, you're just a weird people, weird specialist come out and digest the presentation, we don't think understand, we don't think we'll figure it out. So what is your idea? You just let us know, we're going to figure it out. So that's a, we need the time, very rich about it, this is a very, very important all our local, when it comes to tax issues. So please, we don't need to rush your body, we have plenty of time, please. We don't have any intention to, to, to...
I don't know if you, you heard what I said earlier, Mr. Park. There'll be at least two.
Yeah, I know, but you know, we're going to, that is the first information session, right? So before that information session, we just keep us, you know, we're going to start about it. So we're going to keep, we're going to get the...
We'll have the information.
That's the idea, Mr. Park, is to give you the information. Give you time to digest that information, think of questions you have for us, and then come back to a meeting with the full mayor and council, and you can ask us questions and ask the professionals questions, they'll be here as well.
Well, again, are you going to give them information about the settlement you're working on? Or are you just going to give them general affordable housing stuff?
I think full scenarios of whatever we're allowed to discuss, the professionals will be there to...
Okay, but, but you've obviously spoken to the professionals about coming to that meeting, so what are they going to let you talk about? Because you just, you just said...
I said, we're not talking...
No, what will the professionals be talking about? Will they be talking about details of the plan that you guys are working on, or will they just...
They'll talk about whatever they can. The second meeting...
That's shake and bake.
Whatever, whatever you want.
That's shake and bake, okay, everybody? You got shake and bakers?
It's already, it's already...
How about, how about we give them, how about we give them a scenario? The professionals will give them a scenario.
Don't waste our residents' time, is all I'm saying. If they're going to come to a meeting, give them the details they need.
At least two, that's the most information I can give you right now, I can't give you anything else.
Because if history, if history predicts the future, and it often does, you guys are saying this now, and they're going to get to the meeting, and they're going to say, "Well, we can't talk about that, we can't talk about that." But in nineteen seventy-six, this is what happened, which means nothing.
Ninety percent of the people believe anything with a percentage, that's for sure.
So I just want to know that if we're going to schedule an inconvenience for our residents, that they get information and not just smoke, okay?
I'm so wondering about, because I was last year, I was a councilman, and while I was , you know, all but over, our plan is changed about it, it's a very professional. We know that, that's very curious about it, so that's why, you know, I want to start about it. All I would ever want to do is know that, you know, we have to, plenty of time, we don't need to rush about this matters, okay? So that's why I'm asking you. And then, another one, you know, this kind of theory, I mean, the petition should be brought by the resident and then to make a petition, please, don't make a petition, okay?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
And actually, another question came up before about having the residents vote on the plan. Unfortunately, unless I'm incorrect, and Mr. Marinello will correct me, my understanding was that you cannot do a referendum for this type of issue.
Is that correct?
Yeah, it's under state law, we're not California here, where everything goes in a referendum. We don't get the referendum, the council would have to vote. Okay, so. I actually wish it was different, but it's not. Anybody else? Yes.
Mary O'Shea, twelve Irving Avenue. Number one, unfortunately, I have to say, I'm disappointed with your choice of the police chief, being that Patrolman Lieutenant Hinkleman was one of the officers that had disciplinary hearing against him. And even though Andrew said they didn't have a hearing, they weren't found guilty, they did, did have an internal affairs against them regarding the tapes that were recorded by Chief Chafi, former Chief Chafi. And Hinkleman and Reagan and Chafi had been in the tax office, and that was when they had the comments that were sexual in nature, about anal sex, paper bags on their head. Murphy said to Reagan, "I put a paper bag on your head, I'd rather you than, than Mrs. McMaro." And then they also ridiculed Councilman Park, Councilman Wu, for Asian speech.
Was Hinkleman on?
Yes, he was. Hinkleman, Hinkleman was in that, yes.
Because the mayor said Hinkleman did not say a word on those tapes.
He was there, and he did not object to the conversation. He was in the room. He didn't report it to the Borough Administrator. And, don't interrupt me, Tony, okay? He was on discipline charges, and those discipline charges and internal affairs should have been in their personnel files when you're choosing somebody that's going to be leading the police force, and somebody that's going to be making in excess of two-hundred thousand dollars a year. I think you need to look at the full character of the individual, all right? So that's number one. Number two, billboards. I believe that you are trying to stymie Republicans from putting up political billboards, all right? If the Republicans want to pay to put up a billboard, they should be allowed to. And there was only a half a dozen throughout the town. Mr. Aversa puts billboards on his property, and they get consents from other commercial developed people to put billboards up. This is trying to limit the Republican access to this same type of exposure, okay? Disagree, totally disagree. June eighteenth, when you're having your information session, you should allow questions. Definitely allow questions. When we had the hearing at the school on LG on that rainy night, people were allowed to ask questions and make comments, all right? That is what the public wants. The other thing is, you're having that June eighteenth, and then you're going to have your second session further on. I think it's inconceivable that you're going to have your second session during the summer, when a lot of people are away on vacation. They will not have the ability to attend. Plans are made, people have houses rented, cruises booked, trips planned, and you're going to have this information set, session in the summer when people cannot attend. That is very, very inconvenient, or maybe that's the plan, I don't know. The other thing is, you have an item on the agenda for a tax appeal resolution for eight hundred Silven, with a total of almost three hu, three million dollars, that has to be paid within a hundred and twenty days from the judgment. To start with, this started in two thousand eight. Mulstock was the tax attorney, and I know even after the Republicans took over, Mulstock maintained and continued with some of these appeals because he had done the work, even though when the Republicans took over, he doubled his rates. The thing is, why are you reducing the assessment, or he's suggesting that you reduce the assessment, to thirty-three million dollars on the property which you are negotiating with Normandy for? You went from ninety million to thirty-three million. That's outrageous, okay? Because that's twenty-seven or twenty-eight acres. LG's property is approximately the same size, that was sixty million dollars. If you give this tax appeal amount to eight hundred Silven, first of all, what you're doing is taking some of the financial pressure off of them, which they might have now, and you are setting the rate of the assessment on that property for the next three years while they are building. And that should be at least the same as what the property was on LG, sixty million dollars. It should not be thirty-three million. And if you, if Mulstock recommended that, I firmly recommend that you reject this resolution.
Mary, that thirty-three million is just on the eight acres, not on the full twenty-eight acres. In two thousand and sixteen, that property was converted to two condos, so that settlement is just a unilever portion. So it's that thirty-three that you see there, that only one you get to, is for the eight acres, not for the full parcel.
Not the full parcel, but the, but the previous numbers up there and the rebate?
Up through two thousand and sixteen.
Right.
For the sale to Normandy, that's unilever. And so after two thousand and sixteen...
So who's getting the three million dollars?
Unilever.
Unilever, totally unilever, not Normandy.
Exactly.
I also just want to add that they're not subject to the Frieze Act if they're...
Say, say, speak louder, keep the microphone...
You talked about the three-year period.
Yeah.
That three-year period doesn't apply if there's a zoning change or other change to what's allowed to be built at that location. So if, if something does get approved at that site, or the zoning is changed on that site to accommodate whatever, the town has a right to go in and raise the value of the property at that time. They're not subject to the Frieze Act if that happens.
Right. Well, all I know is that when I left the council, December third, prior to that, we had the, and when I was on the planning board before I was on the council, we had Serenian and the other guy in there, Michael and Masretta, and Debbie Savari and Karen Geiger came to that meeting and heard all about the plans. And even at that meeting, Karen Geiger and Debbie Savari were talking to Serenian and saying, "Well, how much taxes will we get if the apartments and the condos were built there, and wouldn't that offset the schools?" That was the plan right there.
That's an outright lie.
But I stood next to you, I stood next to you. Don't call me a liar, I was standing there.
You called me a lot worse.
I never did.
All right, don't argue.
Many things I quit calling.
That's a lie.
Don't argue with her. Just so I'm clear, just so I'm clear, the, the property that, the property that's being discussed went from forty-seven million to thirty-three, correct?
Ninety-seven.
No, no, the, right, that's the...
That's not the full twenty-one.
No, no, I understand, it went from forty-seven to thirty-three. The balance is still sixty-two million. So altogether, it's ninety-five million, thirty-three plus sixty-two.
Right.
Right, it's ninety-five, okay. All right, and then the other thing I asked, I asked our tax attorney is, "Look, I want to make sure that if we're settling things with these companies, that they give us representations that the sale they did, which the tax court is relying on, was at arm's length, there's no side deals, there's no, you know, setting off on other properties in other states, that kind of thing. I just want a representation and warranty that that's what, you know, we're moving forward on."
I just wanted to say one little thing. See, you know, when, when we left on the council, and Ellen, Ed, and Gloria, myself, Mark, Mark Park, William, we all agreed on the proposal for the property at the Lions Club, okay? And that was on the borough website, the plans, papers were given out to people, okay? It was all out there, and nobody objected to it. Nobody objected to it, and Serenian and Ms. Masretta said, "This is the file with the judge, we have a deadline, we have to file this with the judge. And if the judge suggests we can amend and tweak the plan, add a few more units to this, that, okay?" But all of a sudden, when Debbie Savari got on the council, I hear what I heard at the planning board meeting.
She did not hear that.
Yeah.
That's a lie.
Actually, she's right. You guys did approve it, okay? She's absolutely right.
Well, you know, we can't talk about it, so...
No, no, you, we approved it in public, so we can talk about it. We approved it. Then, then what happened? There was the shake and bake came in two thousand and nineteen, and it got this...
You did not go back to the...
All right, anybody else?
Mayor, can I?
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Mayor, can I make one, Mayor, can I make one comment about the meetings? I think we're proposing these two meetings, my suggestion is that we propose the same information at both meetings. We're going to have different residents there, I think we can all agree on one thing, is that we all want to listen to our residents. I don't think that having two meetings where we may have five people attend one, a hundred attend another, I think we should be presenting the same information at both meetings. And I mentioned earlier, I think, you know, details of the MOU should be explored with our attorney, and to the extent we can provide any information, I think we should do so. Thank you, I agree with you.
I think that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
No, you said, you said the first meeting was just going to be an introduction of affordable housing generally. No, just whatever we were allowed to talk about.
Right, so, so here's the way it's going to work, everyone. Whatever we're allowed to talk about means, in this council dialogue and vernacular, it means that they will tell the lawyers what you could talk about, and you will not find out anything from that night, okay? No, if history predicts the future.
That's how you work, that's why I have to sue you.
No, so, we do have a rule here, you get to come up once to speak, and, well, I'm putting pressure on you to disclose everything, so you better disclose it. Yes, sir.
Pressure on us to be open.
Green Sixon, three fifteen Center Street. About the police chief candidate, I've been listening to you all evening, all, and I have a big question. I belongs to Korean community. Our community elected three councilmen and woman, and none of our Korean councilmen and women even discussed the candidates, who had already red flag, okay? Discrimination, not only the Korean community or, you know, white community, whatever. You know, the racial description, discrimination, who participates or make the fun of the minority language? Is this our police department? And is this our city council? Who even, never anyone made a question, or, you know, this is a very ser, serious, you know, effect to the community? Who has a particular number of borough voters in Englewood Cliffs? You know, it's not, you know, it's a fundamental question. Where is your all you guys conscious? Where is your all values? Where is your, your all morals, okay? Someone who already participates, make a fun of the language of minority, he can still come up to the, you know, candidates to be a chief policeman? Come on, man. You know, this is outrageous. And Brian, you guys made all Korean community idiot. You know, we, we haven't successfully made a very successful immigrant life. I've been living here over four years, I have thirty employees, forty employees in, you know, business. When I need, I hire attorney. When I need, I hire accountant. When I need, I hire medical doctors. Even one of my home doctors, I think I got... Even one of my home doctors, I think I got little bit suspicious. I go to the second opinions, okay? So in that words, you got about the police chief candidate. I think whoever has involved into make a fun of our minority race, he must be out. Three out, out. I think all my councilmen and women must speak out. These guys, because of his history, we even not going to consider as a candidate. I heard one of our residents says, "It's got to be fair." Where is the fair? What's the real fairness? You know, if somebody made, you know, that kind of history, the fair is he must be out for the consideration, okay? So I'm strongly telling you, even all my three councilwomen and men, the Korean background, you guys got to, you know, consider all your borough who made elect you. How come nobody shut up their mouth? This is disgrace. Number two, about the low-income affordable housings. You know, as a common sense, if you guys talking about more than one hundred units, okay? Then you shouldn't even involve to spend money, taxpayers' money, to hire the engineers, lawyers, whoever's. Why? This is outrageous, okay? Even one of the residents talks, speak out, even two years ago, there was a chance to build up the only nine unit of affordable housings, okay? So what I'm saying is, to minimize and comply the New Jersey state affordable housing, our goal is, you know, like a small number of units. You know, it's not one hundred unit or two hundred unit. Anything more than one hundred unit. We even don't need to hire the engineer or attorney or whoever's. Why? We cannot afford, okay? Makes the multiple unit in Englewood Cliffs cannot afford. Resident, I mean, residence-wise or administration-wise or city council-wise, it's out of concern. You know, so, okay, fine. So please, my dear councils, please take a good consideration of your residents' opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, while you're getting up, I just want to reiterate that I oppose any residential housing at eight-hundred Sylvan. Yeah, I know you've heard it before, I'll tell you again. And it's basically a land grab and a vote grab, okay? I have freedom of speech also, and I use it. When I use it, though, the Star Ledger editorial board, and sometimes the Bergen Record, but really the Star Ledger editorial board, without signing their names, write about the mayor from Englewood Cliffs, and they start name-calling. They're name-calling. Because I call them out for what it is. That's what this law is, right? I don't agree with it, but we're going to comply with it. We had a plan to comply, right? But then you speak out against it, and the editorial board, just who controls them, decides to write an article. Well, as I'm reading the article, I realize that there's a thousand public comments below that article, one thousand. And I would say about ninety-nine percent of them were all very supportive. The mayor is right, the mayor is right. One, a couple of people, the mayor should be governor, which I don't want to be. The mayor is right. That's what it is. And if somebody actually wrote, "Well, if there was another name for calling, taking property away from one group and giving it to another group," he probably would have called it that. But that name doesn't exist. But socialism exists, and that's what he called it, okay? So that's, that's what happens here in New Jersey. And what I'm trying to tell you all is, you have Loretta Weinberg, Valerie Hoddle, Gordon Johnson. These are your legislators in New Jersey's legislature, in the Assembly and in the Senate. You need to call those people and tell them that you want affordable housing relief. They have the ability to do that. The legislature can do that. John Bramnick, who's the Senate Minority Leader, is trying to get that on the agenda, but they won't put it. So you need to call these people, because they come up here once a year to get your votes or whatever they do, but they never do anything for you. These are your representatives, okay? And it's a legislative problem. It's not a court problem. The judges shouldn't be doing this. It's not their responsibility. They got stuck with it. They didn't want it either. Because the legislature, for years, did nothing, under Republicans and under Democrats, right? Because it's New Jersey, so nothing makes sense when it comes to this stuff, right? And that's what they did. And the residents of Englewood Cliffs are going to suffer for it, because they're getting away with it. And the lawyer for Normandy is there, I happen to know him, he's a nice guy, but, you know, for crying out loud already, create a hell of a problem here. Marty and I rap it, but you're really, I mean, and I don't blame your client. I don't blame your client. Your client's taking advantage of a terrible system, okay? But you residents are going to suffer for it. Call Hoddle, call Johnson, and call Weinberg, and tell them, scream at them, have your friends call them, tell them to fix this. Don't let the judges fix it. They're not going to. Sorry.
Thank you. Maria Valari, forty-five Jane Drive. I have to tell you, if you were, if you were to call out a name of any police officer in town, I wouldn't put a face to it, because I don't know really any of them, just a couple that come to the meetings, but overall, I don't know anybody, okay? I think that I don't understand why you did not consider, as a lieutenant, as a captain, I don't know the titles, but Hill, who has been running the police department for, what, six months now? And I think he's been doing a good job. I hear good things about him from residents, not political people, but just residents. You know, everything has been running smoothly, nothing has really been happening, and I'm sorry to say that you didn't consider him. I don't know who you were considering. That would have been nice for us to know who the candidates that you were considering, except that we just find out last minute who you approved before you tell the...
I actually didn't hear you for one second. At the last meeting, when somebody asked Councilman Abert, who's the head of the Public Safety Committee, who's in consideration? He didn't tell you all, that the minute Katie Sapko came up, the reporter from the record, after the meeting was over, six names came off the top of his head, okay? That's, that's conspiracy.
You know, we need, we, listen...
Totally untrue.
It's all very true.
Campaigning right now. It was in the paper the next day, Ms. Park. Okay. So I'm concerned about the budget that you brought up in May. We're six months into it and into the year, and we still don't really know anything other than what you decide to tell us at the last minute. And you're kicking this budget down the road. I know that when I was Board of Health Secretary, I was asked, I had no choice, to give a budget. I don't understand why you forego this this year and just decided to just, whatever you decided to do on your own. And it really is a shame that, six months into the year, we're still here. I'm concerned that what is being done is to, because it's an election year, and you want to show the people, you know, do the Englewood Cliffs residents again, and so, hey, we lowered the taxes this year. But meanwhile, even the experts that you had here weren't able to really give us any answers. It was all platitudes, and if this, and if that. I'm sorry, that's not how I run my budget, okay? I need to know how much I need in my budget to run my house. I can't say, oh, well, maybe this won't happen, and this will happen. And I'm sorry to see that this is how you're running this town. I'm concerned about, you know, Chief Chaffee has been a huge and major player in a lot of the woes in this town. And I don't know why nobody ever did anything about him, whether it was the Democrats, or why he has such support. It, it, it upsets me that this man, who's been exposed by his own recordings, by his own voice, talking derogatory remarks about Asian Americans and Asians in general, to make fun of people simply because they're different. I'm an immigrant, and I, I understand how hard it is for people to come to this country and speak with an accent, and nobody, nobody should be judged based on an accent. That's disgraceful. This is the United States, it's a country that I came to to get away from socialism. What also, to have a chief speak on a tape about sexual comments, about anal intercourse, and it's disturbing that you people exonerated him. There are people being fired today everywhere, in every business that you can think of, for saying less than that, for saying, gee, you look pretty tonight, or touch your arm at a job, and they get fired. And this man, you gave him everything that, you practically gave away the kitchen sink. Why would you do that? Why would you not hold this man accountable to what he did and what he said? And he did it himself. These are not allegations, people, these are facts. Shame on you. How can you sit up there and decide on chiefs and give us no information whatsoever on why you decided on this person, and why you didn't decide on another person? Political? I think so. Favors? I think so. And you may get angry at me, Mrs. Savari always throwing that at me, Mrs. Valari, I resent that, but you know what? That's what I think, and I have a right to think what I think. And I'm mature enough today, and I know a lot today, being an immigrant from another country, how things work in politics. I'm sorry, I don't have any more time. I will address it next time. And you should give everybody information, whether it's about police, or building, or
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard?
Carol McMoran-Forey, Ninth Summer Street. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Marinello, I've been keeping time from the caucus. You're letting some people speak eight minutes, others five. It's very clear who you keep stopping at five. You're going to have another lawsuit. You can't selectively stop, okay? You can't, you heard the answer, I'm sure it's coming. You get sued because you discriminate against people. Mr. Marinello, I'm making you aware. I've been timing it, there've been people speaking eight. If we go over by a minute, you need to let people go, over by the minute. You can't stop some and not others.
I agree with you. I disagree with the five-minute rule. We never had it.
All right. I want to, okay, I want to talk about two things, the appointment of the police chief and the, I don't think this is, the appointment of the police chief and affordable housing. I'll try and go as quickly as I can. I want to thank Mr. Song for articulating it in the manner that he did. I too am very sensitive to individuals that make fun of other individuals that have accents. My mother speaks very broken English, it's very hard to understand her. She has a third-grade education, going through World War II and living in a bomb shelter in Malta, okay? So she wasn't allowed to have the education that other people did, going through the war. So when I heard those tapes, and I saw the opportunity that two of them had not been designated confidential, I immediately played them for the public, for people like you, Mr. Song, okay? And Mr. Wu, and Ellen, okay? Because I heard, and I'll walk you all through tape number one oh two, because I don't know what went on in that closed session, but I'm going to tell you the facts before you vote. Mr., you are so rude. He's going to talk about my children, okay? You want to talk about talking? We're talking all these people that Bill, no, I'm upset now, right? How dare you call me Ellen and call everybody else here by their last name? And meanwhile, she spread rumors that my children, boy, Bill, Louis' children, he had to change kids from this school. They go to private school.
You could do that outside.
Uh, Mr. Wu said that he made a mistake, that it wasn't me, and it was Mr. Morfes, actually, and he said he was going to be... He heard you. ...of that. I never said that.
Okay, all right.
Okay? I never said it.
Stop your time.
But I never said that, and that's like so rude. I mean, I called her Ellen, because I worked with her for three years, and I'm really sorry, Ms. Park. I apologize.
Let's stay with our business.
This is really outrageous. Ms. Park, I don't even know, what was I talking about?
Bomb shelter.
No, I don't, I don't, I... No, I was talking, no, I was talking about tape one oh two. Thank you. No, it wasn't tape one oh one, it was tape one oh two. And I will take you through what tape one oh two was. We had a budget meeting that morning upstairs in Borough Hall. Unbeknownst to us, we were being tape-recorded by Chief Chaffee. Present at that meeting was Captain Regan, Lieutenant Henkelman, Maribel Laberty, myself, and Councilman Wu was there. Mayor was on speakerphone. Meeting ended, I stayed upstairs. Again, unbeknownst to me and others, all the others, including those police officers that were taped, they went downstairs to the tax office. And boy, did they have some great conversations. And they started Paul Duffy, Fran Marinozi, Janice Romano, Lieutenant Henkelman, Captain Regan, Chief Chaffee. They didn't talk sexually once. They went once, twice, three times, probably four times in that parameter, it's tape one oh two. I don't know how you didn't hear it, because it's there. I could take you exactly to where it is on tape one oh two. I also filed a report with the Borough, because that would have to know about it, was handed in. And I outlined what happened there, and the names of the individuals that were involved. I have yet to be interviewed on that. That was in July of last year. I have yet to be interviewed on the information that I brought to your attention about those police officers and the Borough employees. So I can't understand how I listened to you earlier say that there were investigations, because how can you have an investigation when the person that gave the complaint was never interviewed yet? That's the first thing. So there probably was never any interviews, but we're going to find out if there was, because guess what? You have discovery and lawsuits, right? And you're going to find out, because you've got to produce the documents. But the tapes exist, and they were distributed publicly, so everybody should listen to it. And Mr. Henkelman, Lieutenant Henkelman, Chief Chaffee, and Captain Regan started making fun. I don't remember which one of them said "Wuuk." I don't remember which one of them said "Ching Chang Liang." I do remember which one said that they shook their bag over my head, compared me with Animal House and slapping me, talked about me having sex and how my husband makes me happy, talked about anal sex. It's really disgusting that you people are saying that, and I would really appreciate you not doing something else right now.
I'm just watching the time.
Okay, well, don't watch the time, because I'm going to go past my five minutes like you let other people, okay? How can you sit here and consider Lieutenant Henkelman when he was in the room, not only what, so there were Asian comments made? And even if he didn't say them himself, as a police officer, he had an obligation to say, "Stop. Stop. Stop. Stop, guys, stop." There were women present. Stop. He didn't say, "Stop." That's not good character, in my opinion. And you want to make him, I'm fighting, I'm not Asian. I find it horrible that anybody thinks it's okay to do that. I also think that, how do you sexually talk about women that way? And stand there and say, "It's okay." You have other choices. There were two individuals, out of the, out of the six, there's four, that unfortunately made some really bad choices about whether it's the tapes or what's in the discovery, and I'm going to finish. I, um, I'm asking you to listen to these tapes and to understand that the person that you are, if you vote yes, you are voting yes to a police chief that thought it was okay to sexually degrade women, to be in the presence of racist comments against Koreans and Chinese, and didn't have the strength of character to say, "Stop." I will not allow that. I want to... I wanna, I have one sentence, excuse me. Do not interrupt me again.
You just told me you're gonna stop me because I don't, I'm not.
Mr. Versa, you treat a different people differently, so just cut it out, let the person speak.
Okay, I have just a very brief thing to say about affordable housing.
Please, thank you.
Mr. Marinello, I'm gonna ask you to ask them to stop. I'm trying to.
It's eleven o'clock at night.
I patiently waited while everybody else spoke.
Just say what you have to say.
I'm trying to, thank you. The affordable housing. I'm gonna offer my help again and I'm sure Russell Perino will as well. I offered it the last time. The gentleman at 178 Middlesex, I happen to agree with what he said, this is not a Republican-Democrat We have a wealth of information that we wanted to pass on to you on January 3rd and you did not, you didn't wanna accept that. For whatever your reasons are, I don't even wanna go backwards, I wanna go forwards, you have, there's a problem here. I don't even know if it's fixable at this point because I think it may be too far ahead in decisions and the way you acted, but well, that's yet to find out, but I am for the sake of the town willing to offer my help, my information, my insight, whatever work we did for a year and a half, because at the end of the day, the residents are the most important here, okay? And we have to work together as a group to do what's best for this entire town and you need to try and find, to put your political hatred for the other side aside and work with Russ and I and let us work as a group, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred. First I want to commend the council. I think you went through a very difficult process, it took longer than I would have hoped, but I am pleased that you will be voting on a new police chief and I think the town needs a new head of our police force. On another note on the affordable housing issue, I attended the meeting on, in early January at the planning board and I questioned Mr. Serenian, but Mary O'Shea, you got it wrong. What I asked him was what any analyst, any person with an analytical background would ask of a professional, which is what are the alternatives that you explored and what do they cost? Very simple. And I hope, I certainly hope that this mayor and council, as you move forward, has pushed your professionals to give you the information that anyone making a reasonable decision, a decision in the best interest of our community needs to know, which is not Ms. Eastwood's projections on the impact on our schools, but the assessment by professionals using the information available and used throughout the state as to what the impact is likely to be. No one can know for certainty, but you have to know those numbers. You have to know if housing is built on 800 Sylvan, what are the tax revenues that we're gonna get, what would be the real cost of the plan that was put forward in December. I hope that I will learn at the informational session the answer to those questions. I wanna know the financial impact on our community of the various alternatives. I wanna know the impact of the alternatives put forward in the mayor's December 12th plan. I wanna know how much that would have cost us and I wanna know the alternatives, the questions that you asked of the professionals that got you to the point where you could sign an MOU, whatever that actually has in it, that would lead you to believe that another alternative is preferable to the one on December, of December 12th. And I also wanna know what the cost would be to our Borough of continued litigation. I know by looking at bills that you've already spent over a million dollars and we haven't gone to trial. So I wanna know how much money this Borough would have anticipated spending just to tie this up in the courts and what your professionals have told you would be the likely outcome even after you went through millions of dollars in legal expenses. I've been through a lawsuit, I've been through a major one and I can tell you that you never got what you expect or what you'd love to get from the courts. You found that out with the sending receiving, where we spent over a million dollars and we thought we were right and we thought we would win and all we did was make the situation get worse than we had ever expected. So you have to be very, very leery before you leave a decision that's this vital in the hands of the courts, because the courts are not the residents of Englewood Cliffs and the courts don't care about Englewood Cliffs. That's an unfortunate case. We now have state law which requires that we have affordable housing in Englewood Cliffs and I hope and pray that you guys sitting there do the right thing for our community and make it as easily, as easy a bitter pill that we swallow and that it doesn't negatively affect our community as a lot of, I'll use the word propaganda, because I don't know the numbers yet and I don't think that anybody in this room, other than the people sitting in the council, know the numbers. And I hope that next week I will learn the numbers associated with some of the alternatives. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
I'll be brief. There are those that still like to come to the microphone and say it's the planning board's fault. It doesn't even bother me anymore, it didn't begin, I've become immune to it. I know what the planning board did and what I did was the right decision then and I would do it again today. At some point in the future, when council allows me to speak why we voted the way we did, I will do so, right? And no one's gonna wanna hear that, because I can refute these idle comments made by people who have put a political spin on this for their own political benefit. That's the bottom line. To those who knocked on doors, panning the planning board and me and the mayor and everything else, it's ludicrous and it's really sad. He speaks more about the people making those comments than about anything else. I have to measure my words, but normally you had the choice, they could have come back to the planning board at many different times. The candidates that ran for office last year promised to bring them to the table and to reinvigorate the commercial development. Gee, it didn't work. What a surprise, right? So I'm speaking, please don't interrupt me. I'm sorry, I'm not, I do not lie. Let's, you wanna talk about untruths? Let's talk about untruths for a minute. Up until this evening, there was no conversation at all about a public session for affordable housing. And I didn't hear anything, I come to pretty much every meeting. It seems to me that because there was a public outcry this evening saying, "What are you doing?" All of a sudden now, well, we're gonna include the public in this, in this process. And it's going to be, what, six days from now? So maybe something, I'm missing something, but I think what caused, this is my own opinion, this informational session to all of a sudden appear is the fact that the public is speaking up and saying, "Stop, we wanna know what's going on." If the public and Hackett's hat knows what's going on and we don't, never mind the fact that I'm a planning board chair, but as a resident, you could get up, any one of you could say, "You know what, we're on a committee, just so you know, we're entering into a MOU, member of agreement, a memorandum," and leave it at that, okay? Something. But to get up tonight and say, "Well, we're gonna do it right, don't worry, we pla," you didn't plan it. It happened because of the public outbursting of people coming here saying, "What the hell going on?" You can't deny it, I'm sorry, you can't.
That's wrong.
So, well, you can disagree.
We can discuss this before.
Okay. And guess what? There were publications that ended in people's newspapers and their mailboxes, you knew it was coming, you knew it was coming.
So disappointed.
Yeah, well, I'm not disappointed. And I choose my words very carefully, anyone who's known me over the years, I'm not one to criticize, okay? But what's happened in this process, from January 3rd to today, I will continue to criticize forever, okay? You could have brought us in and said, "You know what, Russell, Carol, tell us where you were and why." And they dismiss it, fine, but you should have done it. You could still do it and Carol and I would come in. I'm sorry?
We have the attorneys that you worked with.
They are professionals hired by the town that will move on after this case is done. They are not the principals. I don't claim to be the principal. It's like a principal attorney relationship, right? You don't let attorneys make decisions for you. The principals are always the person who has to be responsible for making the decisions, okay? So you can listen to your professionals and I agree you must, but always remember the decisions have to be made not by the attorney, but by the principals and by the principals that you folks appear.
That's true. You got these things.
But the principals that were involved, I'm using that term loosely, was the mayor, Carol and myself, right?
You didn't go to the public.
No, it's totally different. We were, it's a totally, the process back then.
It's not different. It was affordable housing.
It was affordable housing, but the process was different. I'm sitting at the planning board, it wasn't my place, I could not, as a planning board person, go out and make these public presentations, that the governing body could it if they so chose to, right?
Your attorney actually says that you did go out to the public and that this is the public's desire. I'll pull it up.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the report said those words.
It does.
Those are not my words, I can only speak my words.
It's in the report.
And so be it, that report was written by someone other than me.
Yeah, no, the point is, is that you didn't go out to the public because you were told not to by the same attorneys that told us we couldn't speak about it. You know, I'm beat up on something that I don't control.
But when the memorandum is done. Are you kidding? A memorandum was inked. You're kidding, right?
No, I'm not kidding.
You're kidding, because since January 3rd, I've been trying to get information from you and Edversa. There's a long, just the public knows, there's a long list of, there's a long list of emails from me to lawyers, to you, asking for information, to the point where last week I actually sued all of you to get the information, the professionals, because they, they were in, actually one. You guys come to the public and pretend you're telling them things, but meanwhile, we know what you're doing, we know what you're doing, stop it. If I have to chase you for information as the mayor, what do you think the public's gotta do?
Here's the difference, here's the difference.
Two of her head, right?
Yeah.
I did not sign, I did not sign, nor did anyone else on the planning board, one piece of paper saying, "Here's what we're going to do." That came, excuse me, that came after a public meeting and a vote. The difference here is someone executed a memorandum, right, on behalf of the Borough, right? That is the big difference, that you actually signed off on something as a party of three, right, without announcing it to the public. We didn't sign a piece of paper.
Correct.
The planning board did not.
That's very correct.
Someone, someone on behalf of the committee, it was, I'm assuming it was the attorney, Mr. Wunsch probably, or Mrs. Serenian, not sure.
No, Mr. Wunsch signed it.
Okay, you're seeing.
They wouldn't put their names on it, they knew there was something wrong.
So here's the difference, it's a big difference between not being able to speak about things, but it gets to a point where you're putting your name on a piece of paper and it's out in the public venue, we need to know, we have the right to know. And you're never gonna change my mind.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Perino? Have you seen the, have you seen the MOU yourself?
I have not.
Okay, I'm just asking because somebody brought it up that it's on e-cuits and I have not, I have not found it on e-cuits.
There's correspondence back and forth about it.
Mentioned it, but there's no MOU online, right?
This will try to tell you, Russ.
But it doesn't, no.
No, there is a MOU, there is an MOU.
The matter of coming to the public.
I'm trying to understand it. I'm not, I'm asking, I'm asking, just trying to make sure I understand, because an MOU is a confidential settlement.
Of course.
It should not be online.
It's not, no one's saying that it is.
No, 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 that's not true, somebody said it was, two people actually said it was.
Someone said they signed an MOU and it says it online.
I just wanna make it clear.
There's correspondence. There's correspondence confirming that an MOU was signed, I think it was back in April, I don't know exactly.
All right, I understand that that might be the case, we have, as lawyers, we have to communicate with the courts back and forth?
Of course, no, I understand the process, I was involved in it three months.
Right, okay.
I understand completely.
This is not true, because I don't want the public to leave here thinking that that MOU, they may all go running to try and find out how to get on e-cuits, which I encourage them to do to get as much information as they want about cases, but that won't be there.
But I ask, my last comment is, I ask that the, that members of the public, stop trying to distract the conversation about affordable housing and putting it in the planning board's lap. It's been argued too many times, okay? The facts don't change, they are what they are. I can't speak to it cohesively now because I'm prohibited. I have no bias against the applicant, against Andrew Sylvan, not then, not now. When the time is appropriate, I'll share with the public and this governing body all the details. There was no one else in this room, I don't think, that was there for every meeting. There was one resident that was there for three, who's become the know-it-all about the planning board and everything you do with land use law, okay? I was there for each of the meeting, for every minute. So nobody can just get up and say, "It's the planning board's fault." They have no idea what they're talking about. Thank you.
And thank you again, Mr. Perino, for chairing the planning board. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Francis, I have something more to say to you. Um, again, what's funny about this, that we're talking about the residential houses, the low-income houses at 800 Sylvan. I go up to something like last year on my first Englewood Cliffs meeting all year that I came to check out, and everybody was like, "I don't need to." It's like weird. But nobody wants it. If there's like a way to like stop it, like, she'd be like, "Stop." Because I moved to like this town because of that. But now I find out that Alpine already has these low-income houses. Where? I've been to Alpine.
Nine W.
Where?
Nine W.
They're like very in Nine W. In the woods, right?
No, they're just off of, off of Nine W. Before Hillside on the west side.
Yeah, so we don't have woods, we don't have anywhere like other. It's like, it's like that, there's that. All right. So the low-income house. The thing that I don't understand here, and it's weird how things have to happen, right? After my experience, okay, this Friday, which I'm trying to get back into the L E P here and rescuing a baby deer, okay, and then I had a deal with like a tourie, okay, and police department over here. Hill, I know him, I know of him, and in 2005, um, you know, I had a situation where basically he actually like helped me out. This is a guy that has experience, he's an ex-marine, he's always in the corner, like he stays in his corner, you know, he's just what he's supposed to do, he's like a nice like guy and stuff. This is a guy that, me personally, I feel safe, okay, having somebody being in command of like even it. You know, there's a lot of like young guys, they think everything's like a joke and like funny and everything, you know? Everything's like, they bear like no weight on it, you know? Like, somebody that's gonna be put in charge needs to be somebody that's gonna be like responsible and that can lead and lead, you know, and that is leader. Not somebody that would just, you know, somebody in a merit system, not just like somebody because I'm friends with you and I know you and everybody like knows Fran, hey, you know what, let's put Fran like in charge. I don't think it should like work like that, so, I don't know. I'm a little disappointed that he wasn't even like mentioned entirely tonight. I know there's a lot more stuff done, like I wanna say and stuff like that, but, all right, thank you for listening.
Okay. Okay, I don't see any other hands. Can we have a motion to close the public portion?
So move.
One favor?
All right.
Okay, next up, our payment of claims, Resolution 19-126, May 9, 2019 through June 12, 2019. The amount is $4,402,340.19. Just my comment is basically that any money being paid to Wunsch, Marinello, or Serenian, I oppose, because they're conflicted or not doing their jobs properly. Is there a motion?
One second.
Can I have a vote?
Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Adversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Okay, next up is the 2019 budget introduction. It's Resolution 19-127. There'll be a public hearing on July 10, 2019. When I instructed the budget committee, the finance committee, to come back with the budget, I said, I don't want any tax increase whatsoever. They've done that, and I thank them for that. I'm not sure, though, it's been done correctly. We'll do that in discussion, because a lot has been pushed over to emergency, and if it's an emergency, you should have known about it today, because it's an emergency. So how could you know about it today, right? So, but the editor was here last meeting and said you could do that. So with that said, you're all, if you wanna do a motion?
If I ask Chair, I wanna make a motion?
No, thanks to adopt the resolution.
Introduce. Introduce. Introduce.
Introduce it. I'm sorry.
Second. I'll vote.
Counselperson Wu?
I'm gonna vote yes to begin discussion on the budget, but just with the caveat that we haven't, I didn't get this information from my colleagues until May 29. I just need, you know, in the past, we looked at capital, compared year-over-year, we looked line-by-line. The only discussion we had was on May 29. We went through it extremely quickly, and I'd like to be fiscally responsible, make sure we have a good deal for our taxpayers.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yeah, so if there are any questions I can ask you...
Appreciate it.
Park?
Yes.
Adversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Can't do the ordinance.
We have ordinance, 2019. It's a first reading. Public hearing will be on July 10, 2019, 19-08. An ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-13, entitled Police Department of the Borough Code of the Borough of Angledwood Cliffs, Burton County, New Jersey. So this is actually, it's an ordinance that is changing the standards for police hiring. If you recall, when, after I became mayor, we made it a more stringent, more professional, more entailed process and qualifications that were required. This council is going to, by this ordinance, reduce that down to a lower standard, which I don't support.
Need a motion?
So move.
Second. Counselperson Wu?
I'm gonna vote no. I would have thought this would have been discussed. We're appointing a chief. I would think that this should be discussed with them. I don't think asking for an associate's degree is asking for too much, and I think we should have kept the old ordinance.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Adversa?
Yeah, just so you know, we did bed and language first.
So it's not required anymore?
Right. That's all you did. You changed the entire meeting, that's all you did.
Changed. That's all.
O? Counselwoman Al?
Yeah.
Good comments.
All right, next up is 19-09. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 19, Signs, Billboards, and Outdoor Advertising, Section 19-4A, entitled Permit Required of the Borough Code of the Borough of Angledwood Cliffs, Burton County, New Jersey. So this is regarding the sign ordinance on residential properties. Mr. Marinello was asked by me earlier if this was lawful and constitutional. In his legal opinion, he said yes. Is that correct?
How many times have I answered it?
Well, I'm just making sure. I don't want you to say I said something you didn't say. So, he said how many times have I answered that, so I take it that that's what he said in fact, in a somewhat disrespectful way, but that's okay. So, is there a motion?
Are you saying you didn't know his mind?
So move.
You didn't.
Can I need a second?
Second.
Counselperson Wu?
So I Googled this one personally. There's been Superior Court rulings, like one of the residents said, you can find it right away. I don't believe in the restriction of our freedom of speech rights. I'm gonna vote no.
Counselperson Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Because he did a Google search.
Yeah. Just so you know, it's not, you can't have signs on your lawn. You just can't have those huge billboards that they're on the side of the building on your lawn. Doesn't matter if you're D or R, your neighbors don't wanna see it. I've got many complaint flashers from residents saying, why is that huge billboard in front of that house, right in front of the school? Why do we have to be political in front of the school? It's right? Well, it wasn't hard, because it was actually...
It's in the meeting for peace.
Right? Anyway. So, let's just be clear. It's not that you can't have signs. All right, so yes.
As a valid...
Adversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
My understanding is that if it's reasonable time that they're out, that limits the scope enough to make them permitted, but I hope Mr. Marinello is correct. Let's do resolution, we had to do one at a time, I think. Resolution 128, self-examination. Can somebody explain that? Yeah, so what's the self-examination? Is it a financial exam?
It gets done, it gets passed every year. Sorry, I can't explain. We're here. We're just...
People don't stay up that late.
Borough councils, are they an opinion of that?
It is something that gets passed every year as far as the budget.
Okay, but what is it?
This one, 128.
Resolution.
We have to pass this and push the budget.
My understanding is that it allows us to almost self-court it as a preliminary before you approve the budget. That's my understanding. Well, we had our professional here, but I guess he gave up after 10:00.
Yeah, I mean...
He was right here. Every year, including Barbara, I mean, every year, we've...
I know, but I'm just asking what...
The budget has been done properly.
That's it. It's not...
They accorded the local budget law.
And we're, and our CFO will attest to that.
Yeah, all applicable statute requirements have been fulfilled.
I make a motion to pass it.
Can we add one thing to this, which is emergency appropriations?
I wouldn't change anything to it, Phil. I just...
Because that was an issue when we had the budget meeting last time, just in terms of how we're, what items we're putting into emergency. I think in the past, we've done, we've accounted for that differently. If this is standard...
This isn't written by the order.
I made a motion to pass it.
It's a state, it's a state rule.
Okay, so I don't recommend passing anything that no one up here understands, so... But you're free to do what you want. I'm not gonna support it.
I said I understand, so I vote to pass it.
I second it.
Abstain.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Adversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-129, authorized increase in deferred school taxes. What relation on this? Yeah, what is that?
Why don't you ask this question before, when you wanna hear this here?
Well, the CFO left. I can't control when he leaves.
School taxes are drawn up. So that's why we're increasing our deferred schools.
Sorry, can you repeat that? We can't hear you. Put the microphone up.
Okay, I know this is funny, how you guys, last year, we didn't have any of these questions, but it's good. The local deferred school tax has gone up, because our school tax portion of our budget has gone up. So this is the deferred tax that's actually owed to the school that's still in our budget. Okay, if you'd like more detailed explanation, we can ask the professionals at the next meeting.
Yeah, so last year, we had our professional here.
Because I'm sure that nobody called up Chris or Steve Wilcox to ask them a question.
Not true. So it's a timing issue? Don't get annoyed. Don't get nervous about it. Is it a timing issue?
Getting annoyed because...
Oh, wow, you know what? I like that answer. Is it a timing issue? Is that what you're saying? Or is it just, it's a timing issue? Okay. Fair enough. No, based on what you said, it sounded like that.
I second.
Okay, one, well, are we voting? Yeah, we're voting.
Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Adversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Counselwoman Al?
Yes.
Okay, number 130, certification of compliance with United States Equal Employment Opportunity. Mr. Marinello, is, what is that, and what's your opinion on it?
It's part of the budget process, something that's been passed year-over-year in the town.
Can't hear you.
Something that's part of the budget process. It's required as far as the budget. Just says that you, as a governing body, understand the EEOC requirements for consideration of arresting conviction records at the employment decisions.
And in your...
I don't certify whether or not you guys have...
Right, so in your opinion, are we in compliance?
I have no idea. So let's not ask for a legal opinion.
But we're relying on you.
It's not a legal opinion.
This year was provided to us by Mr. Barbarini this year.
I make a motion to pass. We do it every year.
Second.
Mr. Nika, if you're gonna stand back there and attack me personally, I suggest you leave right now.
Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Counselwoman Park?
Yes.
Adversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Okay, 131, authorized agreement between the Borough and the Fort Lee Library. I'm okay with that, except that it should be the mayor signing, not the clerk. Clerks don't sign agreements.
He saves $30,000 on that, people.
Good, I'm glad. Good, I'm glad. Thank you. Thank you. And we're in Fort Lee because of me.
And mayor.
So that's good teamwork.
You would sign it, I attest it.
The way it's written, hold on a second.
Make a motion to pass.
Wait, hold on a second. Don't make any motions. 131.
Not signing without, it's, there's other resolutions that have been written the same way. I didn't write this, but there's other resolutions. It's you're the one that's signing it, and I'm the testing, so I'm signing it as well.
Okay, but that's not what it says. It says the mayor and the borough clerk are hereby authorized and directed. So mayor is authorized to execute, and you're authorized to attest, or however you wanna do it.
So move.
I need a second. Second. Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Adversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Okay, 132, authorized hiring of summer seasonal part-time personnel.
So move.
Cancel.
Just point out, what are our wages? Is there a reason why this is all below minimum?
Because they are summer camp counselors, and they don't have to sign the minimum, they don't have to get paid the minimum wage.
Confirmed by our counselor?
Yes.
Our borough attorney?
Actually confirmed by the state, because I did tell them to make sure that we have not the public the $15 an hour.
Okay, Mr. Marinello, is that correct?
I don't have any idea. Nobody asked me to leave. This is not an assignment for the borough.
You're the borough attorney, you need the resolutions. We're at a meeting.
True, but your understanding of the borough attorney's...
Listen, I practice law too. When I show up, I know my answers.
Well, yeah, that's good. Next time, you can ask me a question in advance, and I'll find out the answer for you, but I don't think I know it.
Do you wanna raise them to $15 an hour?
No, it's 885.
I guess...
Look, subject to confirming that it's lawful?
Mayor, I call, and as I do every year, I call the Division of Labor.
I made a motion to... Don't we just vote on it?
Look, subject to, subject to confirming that it's lawful?
Mayor, I call, and as I do every year, I call the Division of Labor.
I made a motion to pass. Don't we just vote on it?
Let me...
Okay. I understand you call them, but they...
Yeah.
The state.
No, I'm sorry. I trust the state.
Okay. I don't.
Okay? I contacted the state, and I asked them, "Do the children in summer camp..."
Ed asked me to leave New Jersey just now.
I just recommended. I didn't say, we didn't make a suggestion.
Cancel woman Wu?
Will you sweep me through it?
Should we just make a double confirmation? Should we make a borough attorney?
Am I, like, illiterate, and I don't know? I call.
Okay. I wanted to hear it from the borough attorney.
We can have our borough attorney on the little thing.
I guess it's a good point.
I just want to make sure we're legal. We're doing something legal here. I mean, it's HR, right?
Look, if it's not lawful, Katie's gonna write an article about this, so let's be right about it, right?
Are we still on the...
All right, I'll abstain.
Are we still on the summer draft thing?
Yeah. Right. Like, I'm gonna jip our kids. Okay. Cancel person Sung?
Yes.
I'm not answering nasty, Mrs. McMorris. That's your opinion. Mrs. Savari?
All right, come on, everybody. We're almost done. I have a rule. We gotta finish the meeting the same day we started it.
Cancel woman Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Okay, 133, renewal of liquor licenses, 2019 to 2020. There's a list of individual, I think in the future, what we should do is actually what we do on tax appeals, put the name of the entity there, like the name of the place, so we know what we're talking about, but go ahead.
So moved. Anybody second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did.
Cancel person's Wu?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Yes.
Wu? I'm sorry. Uh, O?
Yes.
Okay, 134, authorized not exceed litigation amount for Kira Shahimiyan and Gina Damasi PC. Look, you're the special litigation counsel in the COA matter. I haven't gotten any updates from them either, so I oppose this as well, but go ahead with whatever you want.
Second. Yeah, yeah, no, I have to fix it. Seconded by Savari and Aversa?
Yes.
Cancel person's Wu?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
So on 135, I think there's a problem, because Nassau, Nassau Capital Advisors is not a law firm, but they're listed here as appointment of special litigation counsel, so you just need to fix that.
That's my fault.
And also in the title, perhaps. I don't, I don't support this either, because I haven't gotten any updates from them either, but you guys do whatever you want.
What's it correct?
They're a finance, they're financial consultants.
They're not lawyers.
So moved. Second. She's gonna fix it then.
I am gonna fix it. Cancel person's Wu?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
O?
Okay, 136...
Wait, I didn't hear Mrs....
I'm sorry, Gloria. Sorry, Gloria. Okay.
I didn't hear Mrs....
130...
Yes, 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 yes. Going down the road, saying yes, 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 yes.
Okay, it's okay.
Please, get out.
Okay, let's hold it together for 10 more minutes. 136...
Video, the voice is on video.
Okay. Authorized not exceed amount for labor attorney Ruderman Roth LLC. Look, these guys don't give me any updates. They're basically working for the Democratic Party at this point, but go ahead and do whatever you want.
You mean the guy who you appointed?
Right, you guys switched him over.
I guess he knows. Who's right, who's better, who knows?
Oh, Ed.
So moved.
Oh, Ed, you're really grasping for straws here.
So moved.
Hold on, hold on.
I know. You corrupt the demo.
We corrupt the demo?
Yeah.
Okay, are we done?
No, no.
You're voting?
I lost my thing. Okay. Was that 136? Okay, who moved it?
I did.
A second. Cancel person's Wu?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
137, appointment of conflict borough engineer. I just have a question on this. When did, when did they actually start working, or are they working? Have they done anything?
No.
Okay.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Cancel person's Wu?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
So the next one is 138, appointment of borough planner, that's Magna. I thought we had done that already.
No, nobody applied.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Cancel person's Wu?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Okay, 139, authorized tax appeal settlement, T-Land, 800 Sylvan. So earlier in caucus, I mentioned, I forget what exact when we actually did it, but I said that, look, if we're gonna settle something with this company, let's just make sure that the deal they did has become the threshold to look at, was done at arm's length, and that we get reps and warranties stating that they're not offsetting against something else somewhere else. So with that proviso, I leave it to you guys. I don't support it, by the way. It's just a lot of money, and it doesn't make sense.
Did we conclude that that proviso will be in there? Yeah, so that's what the consensus was.
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying, but...
So moved.
Second. Cancel person's Wu?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is the appointment of police chief. So here, I know, you know, it's like a, it's like a settlement. You're not gonna make everyone happy, and everyone's going to leave feeling that they're not happy, but let me say this much. Yes, Henkelman was present when Choffee was saying terrible things, but Choffee was also his boss. I know that's not a good enough excuse, but look, I think that, you know, we need to support as a community whoever becomes the next chief. We need to make sure that they reach out to all our different communities, because they have some making up to do as a police department. They have to make up with certain groups of our society, Korean-Americans, the Chinese-Americans. Bad things happened with Choffee when he was here, and I believe that the force needs our support to work with us to eliminate political policing. We got the truth. We ended up getting the truth. Now we know what the truth is, right? Now it comes to reconciliation, right? We need to reconcile. I know there's some hard feelings, but you get the truth, you deal with it, and then you get the reconciliation, and we move forward. The Public Safety Committee selected Henkelman. The process of putting the department back in a better position started with Officer Hill, who I thank. He's been doing it since October. He did a very good job. He should be commended for the good work that he did. And the process of improving the department and getting rid of the, just the awful past under Choffee needs to continue, okay? So Lieutenant Henkelman, if you guys vote for him to be chief, we'll need your support. I will give it to him, because I want what's best for the community, and I want you to...
That was amazing, I'm sorry. One, one thing, but I disagree with you.
I know you disagree, but we, you know, it's one of those things, right? I think we should move forward and support him and make the police department a better place for the people who work there and for our community, okay? And I think with Choffee gone and the new leader, we can do that. And I'm hoping the men support him as well. And that's it. So...
I make the motion to appoint Lieutenant William Helfman as the next police chief. And mayor, I appreciate your words. They really do, and I think the police force and the entire town will appreciate what you just said, and I personally thank you for that.
A second. Councilman Wu?
I'm gonna abstain from this vote for the reason that I would have liked to see the internal investigation come to a conclusion rather than just be open-ended. I know it ended, but we didn't get any results of that. I think it means a lot to the people of this town. At the same time, I suggest to the police committee and to the mayor and council that we do a reaffirmation of a zero tolerance policy going forward for, you know, races, racial speak, sexism, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd like to get that on our agenda for the next meeting with the police committee's support and the mayor and council.
That's been discussed, Councilor, but thank you. It is advice well taken, and it has been broached already with Officer George Hill, and now the incoming chief will get the same discussion, but excellent work.
All right. Cancel person's Sung?
I'm gonna vote yes, but just, just very quickly, because it's late. I just want to thank all the candidates that came and interviewed each of them. I think they're all great guys. Henkelman resonated with me. I don't know him from before, and I'm not gonna speak too much about it, but he resonated with me a lot, because he was very appreciative. He has a blue-collar background. My parents came here when I was seven. They had the same immigrant struggles that a lot of people in this room have, and in this community. They're small business owners, and he had a blue-collar background, and he was really appreciative of this shit. So I hope everyone supports him as a new chief, and I listened to the tapes that Carol referred to, and I believe he's a man of good character, and he's gonna have a chance to prove everyone else, so I vote yes.
I also want to thank Officer Hill for his work in the past 10 months. And my vote is yes.
Savari? Okay. Park?
I also want to thank Officer Hill. He's done a great job for the last few months, but I think this is a new direction of going with it, so I say yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Congratulations to Chief Henkelman.
Okay. Committee council member reports. I think, I know it's getting late, but let's try to get through this. Wait, we just, we just start down at your end. Councilman Wu?
Nothing on beautification.
Oh, be nice, son. Don't yell at each other, please. Come on.
You look disgusting. You hear what she said? I'm gonna go walk through. That's okay, right?
Okay.
Nothing on beautification and historical. Councilor, what would you like to report on?
Everything that...
Look forward to committee night, sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm a liaison to the Board of Education. They're building a digital media center for, in the library. That's gonna start hopefully after they get some contractors approved, they would start the construction.
I'm sorry, councilor, what's that?